Pledge to the flag, please. Okay, uh, pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance, to the flag.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to have the secretary, um, perform a roll call attendance.
Mr. Freeno?
Here.
Mr. Peraticos?
Here.
Mr. Marinaccio?
Here.
Mr. Maselli?
Here.
Mr. Flower?
Here.
Okay, um, so the statement I have to read here tonight, uh, tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with Governor's March thirteenth, twenty twenty executive order two thou- uh, two hundred and two point one, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on usual cable television channels and YouTube. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town's website, and written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. Uh, there has been a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. Uh, I have also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed. Uh, we have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice on the door of the town hall, as the town's bulletin board is inside the town hall and not currently accessible to the public, and by posting a notice on the town's website. Also, please be advised that in the same way, as if we were an in-person meeting, if you interrupt the meeting, speak at times other than when permitted by the chair, use foul language or otherwise disruptive, you will be cautioned. And if you, if the behavior continues, you will be removed from the meeting and not permitted to rejoin if you share or post inappropriate content. You will be removed from the meeting without further warning and not permitted to rejoin the meeting. Okay, so with that said, um, the se- um, the secretary has sent out the meeting minutes from March the sixteenth. We have to accept those minutes, uh, unless there's any questions, but, uh, can we get a motion to accept the secretary's minutes? As we're still move?
Second.
Okay, a motion made and seconded, all favor? Actually, we have to go with a, with the secretaries, we have to go a roll call vote. See if you can perform roll call vote for this.
Stefino?
Aye.
Mr. Peraticos?
Aye.
Mr. Marinaccio?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli?
I wasn't a member of the board at that time, so I'll have to abstain.
Mr. Flower?
Yes, aye. Okay, so that passes. Okay, um, so our first item on the agenda this evening is, um, adjourned public hearing thirty-three Middle Bush Road for site plan and lot line consolidation. Uh, we need to reopen the public hearing, so I need a motion to reopen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed?
Do you need a roll call for that?
What, a roll call?
Are all votes gonna be roll call?
Yeah, I wasn't sure. It's only if we make a decision, if it's just to open and close public hearings, do we? Or actually, to close the public hearing, I believe we need a roll call vote, is that correct?
If, there's actually no requirement for it, it's just, um, when you're on a Zoom meeting, if it's something critical, you wanna make sure you have everyone heard separately. Because if everyone ans- if you're in the same room, you can see who's answering, but if you're not in the same room, it's difficult to see. So that's it. But for these purposes to open the public hearing, we're fine with a voice vote.
Okay. All right. So, at this time, we have, uh, opened the public hearing for thirty-three Middle Bush Road. Let's see, do we have, um?
You hear me? I'm here.
Is that Al?
It's Al.
Okay, Al, it says front desk.
Yes, yes.
All right.
We'll change that now.
All right, so, um, I guess we have some, uh, I believe you have something you possibly were, we, we still need to discuss, I guess, regarding the, um, thirty-three Middle Bush Road?
Well, I reviewed, I reviewed everything, the, the, the resolution, Pete's, Pete's, uh, last memo. We have no problem with anything, the resolution is fine. Uh, we got a letter today from the, uh, from the county, uh, about a, uh, highway work permit, um, that we're gonna need for over there. Um, and, and the only open issue was, um, was Ralph's request to, to go from, um, stucco to, um, to siding, to hard- like a hardy siding. And even though I inventoryed two adjoining parcels there that were stucco or part stucco, my client, um, agreed to do, um, uh, a hardy type siding, but not hardy specific. If it could be written at, it would be a hardy or equivalent, non-vinyl, it's not gonna be stucco. Um, but there are other products out there today, uh, and hardy isn't, uh, the only composite product on the, uh, uh, on the market today. So, um, we'd like to go with that. I don't have a rendering, because, um, at the distance shown in the rendering, it'd be very hard to pick up whether it's stucco or, uh, or it's siding. So as I argued last time, the shape, the configuration of the building, it is what it is. And that's what the appeal is, not whether it's stucco or whether it's, uh, siding. But to, um, uh, you know, I don't wanna say satisfy the board's, uh, re- uh, request. It's not a problem, not a problem. Okay.
All right, so we appreciate that, um.
You guys know I'm easy.
Okay, so.
Resolution of site plan approval, we'll have that as a requirement.
No, hold on.
Absolutely, that's not a problem.
Yep, so what we have to do before, David, we just, um, let's just confirm that we have nobody from the public, um, that wishes to speak, being it's still an open public hearing.
So, if there's anyone, you have the option to raise your hand if you go to the participant list, um, and find yourself on there, you can raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Um, I'm not sure if people on the call have the ability to unmute themselves if they would like to speak. I see Kim O'Donnell is, so I'm assuming she wants to speak. Kim? Sorry, that was me temporarily unmuted, um. And if someone is on the phone, it's, uh, I don't think we have anyone that's just on the phone, right?
No.
Actually, it, yeah, no, I don't see anyone on the phone, so.
Okay, so I guess, um, I guess seeing that there's no one from the public that wishes to speak, um, you can go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, do you get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Second?
Which one? Was that Marco's, was that you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so a motion made and seconded, all in favor, and we'll do this through roll call vote.
Mr. Freeno?
Aye.
Mr. Peraticos?
Aye.
Mr. Marinaccio?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli?
Aye.
Mr. Flower?
Aye. Okay. All right, so right now, we have in front of us, uh.
Bruce, can I make a comment or a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I remember that the planning board was entertaining three different colors at, I think it's last public, it's last meeting. Did the planning board choose an actual color of the building?
It was not, it, it wasn't for this application, David. We brought, we brought samples, and I don't think questions were ever raised, uh, in terms of the color of the building, in my recollection. Um, I don't know what the record says, but what we showed is, is, um, is what we'd like to go with, with, with no alternatives, um, because none were presented.
Okay, I must be thinking about a different application then.
Okay, that was the Gaslamp Project, they brought in some colors.
Oh, okay, very good, thanks.
Yep, so yeah, I think everybody was satisfied with Al's, um, with Al's elevations and renderings, um, in terms of color, it was just the, the product to be used.
Okay, very good.
Been addressed, so I think we're okay there. All right, so right now, we have the, um, we have the two resolutions in front of us. Um, the first one is, we need to address is the resolution of primary and final subdivision approval. Um, but that does need one item to be, uh, added to this approval. And I'll turn it over to you, David.
This, the siding goes in the resolution of site plan approval.
It was in there?
No, the siding?
Yes, but I have a note here that we had to add to the deed, for the deed to be submitted, that must be added.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm just doing this off.
So, so Al, the only item, I guess it was brought up, and I'll give it up to David, was the, um, actually, David and Lisa, was to add, that they have to submit the deed to the town once it's been filed.
Not a problem. I, I, I overheard, I was part of the workshop earlier, so I heard part of the dialogue. So, like, that's not a problem, so we'll combine the, uh, once you give me the approval, I'll, um, we'll file up at the county clerk's office, and we'll, I guess, uh, we'll, uh, well, we'll record the new deed, right? I mean, that's what you're gonna want, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Knows the current meets and bounds of the combined law.
And, and we said that, and that was already s- uh, submitted, the, there, there was a revised site plan without that sing- that center property line, along with the new meets and bounds, which was submitted many meetings ago to, to the board there, to the professionals. So you already have a record of, of, uh, of that on file there. So, so we're, we're saying that we're gonna be getting, um, you're still gonna give me final approval for the site development plan? I just can't get a building permit until I fi- until that's filed with the county? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
I thought it was a conning.
Yeah, you're not gonna hold me up with the, with the, with this, with the site development plan until I, uh, uh, you know, until I file with the county, correct?
Now, we're, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna vote on both the resolutions tonight. So it's just a matter of getting everything together.
Mm-hmm.
That we can get the final, sign off on final approval.
That's fine.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so for the rest of the board, let's, um, the first item is we need a, um, a, um, we need a motion to approve the resolution of pr- uh, preliminary and final subdivision, um, as amended, uh, which includes the amendment we just discussed. We need a motion to, for, either approval on that.
Still move.
Okay, do we have a, um, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, do we, do we get a roll call vote, please?
Stefino?
Aye.
Mr. Peraticos?
Aye.
Mr. Marinaccio?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli?
Aye.
Mr. Flower?
Aye. Okay, so that motion passes. Um, our next item is, um, for thirty-three Middle Bush Road, the site development plan. Uh, we need a motion to approve the site development plan as with.
We need a, we need to add the, uh, clever siding or the, uh, siding to the.
Yes, sorry, with the, sorry, so we're approving this with the amendment for the, um, the change to, uh, include the siding. Okay, so will we get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right.
Stefino?
Aye.
Mr. Peraticos?
Aye.
Mr. Marinaccio?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli?
Aye.
Mr. Flower?
Aye. Okay, um, with that, I guess we're all set then.
Thank you.
All right, you're wel- you're welcome, Al. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is discussion, uh, discussions regarding Elgin Associates, uh, which is actually to vote on the amended site plan application. Let's see, what do we have here from, oh, we have Mr. Provo. Okay, um, let's see. Let me just do it then. Uh, Bill, do you receive the, um, the copy of the resolution?
Yes, I did.
David, okay, wanted to make sure. Um, with, with it, we were discussing earlier, there is one item that does need to be, um, one additional item which has to be added. Um, I guess you also got, uh, Pizza Tara's letter from CPL. Uh, we're just gonna add in there that you just need to get us the, um, uh, the amended approval should include a condition from, uh, Dutchess County, uh, Health Department, approval for the water system.
Yep.
All right, so you, I guess you're gonna, you're still working on that.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so that will be just one additional item that will be added. So, at this time, we have a, we need to get a motion to approve the resolution of amended site, uh, site development plan, approval as amended. Somebody make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, uh, roll call vote, please.
Stefino? Paul, did you hear me?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Peraticos?
Aye.
Mr. Marinaccio?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli?
Aye.
Mr. Flower?
Aye. Okay, so that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is discussion regarding Downey Energy Liquid Propane Storage. We have, um, is Al Capelli still on here?
Still here.
Okay.
So we did not submit anything. I, I did not expect to be on the agenda, uh, for this evening, but that's fine. We can discuss, uh, several open issues, um, and, um, one of them is, is, uh, you know, will, will show on the next iteration of site plan, some of the planning board members do not know. Bruce, you know about the water storage tank. Um, I heard you allude to it earlier in the, um, in the workshop.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, there's enough water there on site, so to speak, or by, via the truck, uh, uh, bumper trucks, sufficiently fight the fire, uh, to meet, um, all the agency approvals. So we're going to have to put a, a, a storage tank on site. Um, I know I mentioned thirty thousand gallons of whatever size it needs to be to meet all federal requirements, and we'll probably be going over that with you, Bruce, with the fire chief, with Howard, and at some point in time, we'll bring, uh, if you want, um, I was gonna bring Bill Gill in as well, uh, make sure everyone concurs with that, and, um, and then it'll be etched in stone on a, uh, on the site plan, and it'll be a buried, uh, a tank, um, so you won't see anything. There'll be several, uh, fire hydrants, which, um, as a rule, has to be so many feet away from the tanks, so that, so we'll have to do whatever we need to do with, with the town, those hydrants will probably be off-site hydrants in the town right away, uh, which causes other issues and problems, complicates the site plan, but that, there's no other way that we can, we can, uh, we can do it, so, uh, but that'll be coming down the road, um, and we'll have all the information, uh, at the next, uh, at the next middle time. Um, I heard you mention about the landscaping plan as well. We did submit a landscaping plan, uh, uh, it seems like eons ago, so as a matter of a record, um, we did submit a, 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 a plan that I feel, um, adequately gives, um, in my mind's eye, um, I don't wanna say the, the color, the dressing up of the site without, um, you know, hindering any visibility within the confines of the bullpen, within the confines of the, uh, of the, uh, uh, the fenced-in area there. Uh, uh, so if you see it, or we can bring it, uh, next time, hopefully, the next time we meet, it'll be under different circumstances. But anyway, you'll see in the front, for instance, we have a, a continuous shrug row of low, uh, 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 bushes, uh, and interspersed, we have a couple of, uh, trees here and there, uh, but we're not trying to hide anything. So if, if, if you guys wanted to, uh, to look that up at some point in time, we did make a submission, and I think David did comment on, uh, David's office did comment on maybe one or two species of, of, of tree that I, uh, that we, uh, that we specified. Uh, so that's, we can discuss that and, um, and, uh, and, and see what you guys think, and, and, uh, and we go from there. Um, we hope to make a submission, I don't wanna keep on making submissions for, um, you know, just for the sake, I, you know, I've kind of waited for this water suppression thing, uh, to, to be engineered. I didn't wanna submit something and then, uh, uh, show it to you at a subsequent meeting, so I'm waiting for that. We'll bring it into another meeting, uh, hopefully, our, 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 uh, engineer will have, uh, uh, done a better job than my preliminary grading and drainage plan to satisfy, uh, a heat, um, and, um, and yes, I won't ask for a, a public hearing, I think, uh, one more pass to present these things to you would probably be, uh, appropriate before we ask for a, uh, a, a public hearing. So, the water thing, I want the water storage and the, and the fire suppression, I want that ironed out before we, uh, come back. And certainly the drainage, I'd like that to be full point of ninety-nine percent, um, before we, uh, before we submit, uh, before we, we come back to you. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, if we, yeah, I mean, get as much of the, um, you know, answer as much as you can regarding the, uh, the letters you already gotten from, uh, from Pete and David. Um, you know, we'll get, get as much put together, as complete as possible, we'll take a look at it, and we'll go from there.
But as always, we're waiting for others, unfortunately, so I'm waiting for Jody, uh, to come up with the, uh, the information and the engineering on, on the, uh, on the water sup- fire suppression, and, uh, maybe there's a, a Zoom meeting, maybe this Friday, um, and we can narrow that down, and I know my engineer is working on the drainage, so.
Al, have you had any contact with anybody at the DEC regards to the?
Yes, matter of fact, I, uh, as part of your package, um, that we send, uh, to you prior to our, our initial application, we had the DEC out there, you know, right? We had this.
Yes, the flagging, right?
We had the, we had the wetland flag, that's exactly right, I don't know what the impact is until Troy, uh, finalizes the drainage and everything, and then he'll, uh, him in conjunction with Mike, he'll take it to the DEC and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and, um, just an outside observer, so to speak. But no, nothing's gone, uh, nothing's happened with DEC beyond the initial flag.
Okay, has anybody talked to, uh, Mike Sheehan as far as the access point, driveway?
That was a comment of yours, but I have not, uh, that, that just happened to fall by the wayside, that's a good point. During this, uh, downtime, it's probably not a bad idea, I'll follow up with him tomorrow.
It's pretty open out there, shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're kind of, you know, it's kinda tough, we're north and the south portions of our lot, we have no other locations, it is what it is type of thing, not that we're gonna, uh, he's gonna make or break it, but, uh, you know, I can't come in with one entrance in the center. It's, it almost has to be what it is, but I'll follow up with Mike and, uh, and make sure that he sends, uh, uh, a nice letter, uh, as long as you're happy, uh, hopefully, he'll be happy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody else have any, uh, questions for Al regarding, um, regarding this project?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, um, so I guess if that's it, Al, I guess we're.
You'll see me whenever, right? You may not see me, but, but, uh, but we'll submit something shortly when I have something, and we'll, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll this thing along as quickly as we can.
Okay, I guess after this meeting, hopefully Friday, I guess, we'll, I guess the fire profi- fire protection stuff will be all squared away.
Well, at least present it to you guys, for you guys to compare with Jody's take on it, and, um, and, and then go from there, yep.
Yep.
Okay? Great.
All right, sounds good, thank you, Al.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay. Okay, so our next item, um, discussion this evening is the Relai Terrace subdivision. Uh, looks like we have Brian Stokosa here.
Guys, how you doing?
Good, how you doing, Brian?
Hey, uh, just wanna say thank you for, uh, for hosting this tonight, and, uh, yeah, we're here for the Relai, uh, subdivision. It's a, uh, it's a piece of property, it's about three acres in size, just a hair over on, um, north side of Relai Terrace. And we have a, we have an existing home site, uh, that is, uh, present on the property, it was subject to a fire, um, some time ago. It's currently being reconstructed, reframed right now, and what the, uh, current owner applicants would like to do is, uh, subdivide the piece of property, um, into two lots, and obviously, continue with the construction, get a CO, um, and ultimately, try to create another building lot next door to it. Um, we have an existing ditch line that runs along the, uh, rear of the property line, which is toward the north, runs from, uh, east to the west, um, along the rear boundary, and if you're, if you're looking at the site plan, toward the west, we are proposing a new driveway location. There is an existing path that's currently there right now, um, majority of the site is cleared, um, it's s- wooded, brush vegetation. Uh, what we propose is just, you know, family, uh, four-bedroom house. Uh, I'm looking at some of the comments from Pete and, uh, from David's office, um, I don't think there's too many showstoppers here, but just going through the motions, which is, um, we have some town buffer, uh, encroachments, uh, related to the property, again, a majority of this, this property has already been disturbed, it's already been cleared, so, um, just kinda going through the motions and making sure we have everything identified.
All right, maybe we should, uh, do is go through, you, you obviously did get the two letters, um, you have, uh, David's letter from Frederick Clark Associates, and you also have, uh, Pete's letter from, uh, CPL?
Correct.
Okay, so as you go through them, um, why don't we just touch base with, uh, both of our, uh, professionals here, why don't we start with Pete? Um, why don't you go through the, uh, the engineering letter real quick, uh?
Sure. Um, well, we had a comment about we'll need the, uh, uh, you know, the legal, um, legal documents for the right-of-way dedication, um, by lot number one, and also the site easement that's gonna be required, um, uh, for lot one over lot, lot two, so we'll need those, uh, you know, documents. Um, Brian's gonna have to meet with the highway superintendent as far as the driveway, uh, locations, um. David, I know I had a comment about possibly an alternate, uh, driveway location, I believe, for lot number, um, one. Um, I asked Brian if he could just take, uh, a look at the roof leaders for, um, lot one, maybe they can go into some kind of an, um, infiltration trench just to. Asked Brian if he could just take a look at the roof leaders for lot one, maybe they can go into some kind of infiltration trench just to, you know, to cut down on any. Additional drainage to that existing ditch line in the back. And then. There is, there, there is an overlay on the map that based upon FEMA floodplain. You know, it's minor, it's, you know, more, more in, you know, the back of the property, but if he could, Brian could just get together with Barbara. And just see what has to be done, like if anything, for the floodplain. Though we had some minor comments, it's, you know, it isn't really anything that's a big, you know, big issue, so that was it for us.
Okay. All right, so David, why don't we go through, through your letter?
Here, we have a few comments as well. At the bottom of page one, we have a comment regarding ownership. And that issue has been resolved. Apparently the Dutchess County parcel access maps have been updated, so that's good and moot at this point. Item number two, Brian, we need some measurements and calculations showing that no more than ten percent of the minimum lot area of the lots. Is made up of wetlands, land underwater, subject to period flooding or within the hundred year floodplain. And with respect to the wetlands, a wetlands permit application should be submitted for encroachment into the wetland buffer. And we need to establish whether there are any federal wetlands on the site as well. And Peter mentioned the floodplain, need for a floodplain permit for the project. And then we had a question as to whether the proposed driveway could be relocated to the east of the proposed house to reduce the amount of proposed encroachment into the wetland buffer. So Brian, maybe you could address that.
Yep, what we'll do is I'll make a point to reach out to Highway. Try to meet out on site, take a look, drive a location. If we can move it, obviously we'll try to reduce any kind of buffer encroachment. We, we just position the driveway in that location just because there's an existing path off the road that the former owner used to access the property. But we'll certainly look into that if we can reduce it and still gain site distance, it makes sense to, to reposition that driveway. And then we'll obviously address any additional calculations that you need for, for areas not underwater and so on.
Right.
All right, so I guess that was all that. Does, any, any of the board members have any questions for the applicant? No, okay. All right. So I guess. Brian, do you have any other questions that need to be addressed?
Well, I think, I think if, if I get together with Highway and we can get the driveway location ironed out, then I can talk to Barbara and then we can. We can finalize any kind of wetland permitting with her and any FEMA floodplain issues with her. And then we'll resubmit to the board and hopefully push for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Yeah, that, that would be fine, yeah, just, as you said, your next submission, as long as it's as complete as possible, you know, we'll entertain that at that, at that point in time.
Okay, I appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so if that's it for Relais. Let's move on to. On to the next item of discussion for this evening. Which is Tarpon Towers to LLC Wireless Telecommunications Facility. I see we have Alexander here this evening.
Yes, Chairman, good evening, good evening, everybody. And, and as Brian said, I'd like to reiterate and say thank you to all of you for all the extra work it requires to. Do a meeting this way for the first time, so much appreciated. Also joining me on the call are Stephen Matthews from Tectonic Engineering and Nick Smith from Aerosmith. On the site acquisition consulting company to Verizon and Tarpon Towers here. I think just a quick update, sort of where we've been and I'll just run through that quickly. Forgive me if I keep looking at my computer screen, which is to the left of the iPad, my notes, so I apologize, getting used to doing this a little differently. So some of the logistics aren't as familiar. In any event, so it back in January twenty-second, I think was the last time we appeared in front of the planning board. And, and, and met with you all, we had received comm memos from CPL as well as from FP Clark at that time, back in January twenty-second, which led to. The submission that we did on March ninth, really addressing the, the, those engineering's head, engineering issues head on. That was made by Tectonic. We also retained Doug Fishman as your RF engineer and Mike Crosby, who is the RF engineer from Verizon, started having a dialogue directly with Doug. And thank you for allowing us to do that. That led to a March sixth memo that he issued. Which required a little bit of additional information, which we supplemented on April fourteenth to fifteenth and provided to you all. Since then, I think you may have received some phone calls at Town Hall and we responded to that. We had done a balloon float specific to Stony Kill because they had put in comments directly as part of our section one oh six. And that's why we did that balloon notice, not unnoticed, but directly for their issues that they raised about their historic resources. As a result of that balloon float. We made an additional submission to SHPO, who has since issued a no effect sign off letter that we provided to you by email, I believe, Thursday or Friday of last week. We also are in receipt of the memos from your staff, but don't want to get out ahead of either Pete Tataro or Dave Stolman. So I think that's sort of. Where we are procedurally and substantively as far, as far as what we've done and where, where we're headed. So I'll, I'll, I'll stop there, I guess, if that's okay.
Okay. I guess we did have a few items to discuss here. I guess being, I guess the, the engineer's letter, I guess had a couple of items that still need to be addressed. You want to go over those real quick, Pete?
Sure. You know, the first one was in regards to contact in the county department of Public Works. So as we talked about in the workshop, I forwarded around an email to some of, you know, the board. Where I made contact with the county today, so, you know, they are going to at least want to take a look at the entrance. They will require at least a temporary access permit for the construction. So I forwarded that email off to Neil. They are going to be out in that area tomorrow, looking at some other things, so they asked me for the address, they figured they would at least stop, stop by and, you know, look at it, so. I gave that, you know, to them. Neil, one thing we talked about in our workshop was that. If there are any improvements that might be needed to, you know, the driveway as far as temporary, well, I don't want to say temporary, but for, for construction. Access to allow, you know, the larger trucks to bring in, you know, the equipment. In the event that there's going to be additional carriers, you know, in the future, should, should, should the tower be approved. That, you know, probably, probably would want to keep any, you know, driveway improvements in, in, you know, place. Because any other carriers would probably require, you know, a crane to, you know, lift. You know, the units up there, but anyways, that's something that, you know, you'll work out with, you know, the county or your engineer will work out with the county. Lisa probably going to comment on, I know she took a look at the access, you know, today and the easements and all that, so I'll let, I'll, you know, defer to her on that. Had a couple of minor comments on some sections of steel fence and detail for. Concrete rear wall inside of the stormwater basin. You know, I apologize, we did not get to complete the review by the time I wrote the letter for the, for the stormwater couch. I did have one of our engineers start to look at it on Friday. Probably have a memo out on Wednesday. He wasn't coming up with anything that was any kind of an issue. We'll probably ask for a couple of small things, like there wasn't any watershed, pre and post development watershed maps that, you know, were part of that. Couple other like minor things, but we didn't see anything that, you know, like presented an issue. And. I'm just looking at my letter, I think, I think that that was it for us. Thank you. David, maybe you want to go through yours?
Here, Bruce, shall I go through mine?
Yeah, go ahead, David, watch.
All right. So on page two, item one A, regarding the setback to the municipal boundary has been resolved, Barbara provided some information regarding that. That's been resolved. And then there are several items here, one C through E, where some information regarding, you know, specific. Design information regarding the, the tower foundation, cross sections. Of the antenna that could conceivably come down if things, if communications technology changes in the future. These things, Neil, you'd like to provide. As a condition of site plan approval, assuming that the tower is approved.
That, that is correct.
Want to elaborate on that, or?
I, I mean, some of this stuff relates to, you know, geotech and aspects, particularly as to the precise engineering of the tower. And it would just be, I mean, they're not related to, in our opinion, the planning per se as opposed to the construction. So we prefer to do that, I'm, I'm looking at E, I think it was E, hold on. I mean, I mean, E, we could give, it depends on, I guess, you know what, David, let's, let's take them one at a time and see. I mean, it's not that we're against giving you the information, we're going to have to give it to you beforehand, but some of it is just. We don't know the level of granular specificity that you're looking for. And so some of it, we just know we can't get that level until we order the tower, which we don't do until it's approved.
I, I personally think that providing some of this, some of this later is okay. If the planning board gets to the point where it's comfortable with the location of the tower, the height of the tower, the overall general design of the tower, I think some of these specifics could be a condition of site plan approval.
Right, so I mean, just, just by way of background, like on C, when you're asking a little bit about, this is a monopole, there will be no anchors as far as guy wires, right? I mean, I think that's one of the things that, that it's asking about, that we can, you know, we can commit to that. You know, the plan doesn't show guy wires on it. I'm just trying to see what C is really getting at. Right, so we, and, and, and Stephen Matthews is on here, but like, for example, I know generally a monopole uses a caisson foundation, right? We're not looking for them to have a wide foundation, we've shown the, the fence area, the foundation's going to occur, you know, inside the fence area, things like that. So I, I think. If there's, you know, a specific question like in E, where you ask about tower sections, I think we could get you a little more information as far as, you know, how they go up. Do they go up in twenty foot sections, thirty foot sections, things like, like that, to help you guys think about the planning. Maybe if you could tell us what you're trying to get at with some of that, David, we can, we can meet you more than halfway.
Yeah, I would say if you could provide whatever you can provide now, Neil, short of having ordered the tower, that would be good and we can, we can catch up with other stuff later on. As I said before, we're really dealing with the height of the tower, the location of the tower, appearance of the tower. And if we can resolve those things, I think we can get to some of the details later on.
Good, I mean, and it sounds like, and not trying to put words in, in Pete's mouth, but it sounds like if the stormwater was acceptable. Then essentially we know that we don't need to move anything relative to the design of the road coming in and the compound coming in, so everything is pretty set, I think, then, if that's, that's the case.
Item two is a placeholder for the planning board to discuss the appearance of the tower and to determine whether it should be camouflaged or whether it should be, you know, the basic steel design without camouflage.
Right, and that, that was an open ended issue we brought up at past meetings. And I think that we, I mean, I think we need some type of. Some type of, I guess, photo, some kind of Photoshop picture showing, you know, within the background what it's going to look as if it was. Designed with the branches like we had asked for the first time, you know, to stay consistent with other recent monopoles that have been installed in other parts of the town. We're just looking at standard consistency. And also. You know, also the way you're proposing it, to see which way it's going to blend in better with the surroundings. So if that's something that can be provided to us to give us a visual, I think that's what we're really looking for.
Yep, now, I, I, I think we can get you a little bit more information about a proposed mono, monopine here. I think we gave you in our submission, I'm looking for the shots right now, in our March ninth submission, or maybe it was the one right before that. There was a visual study and it had select views that showed the monopine as opposed to a monopole. If there are a chance to take a look at that and if there are additional views, one or two views you'd like to see simulated, we could definitely provide that. I think it's also important to recognize that in this context, that the SHPO did say that there are no resources in the area and they found that there would be no effect of, of a monopole in this area. So I think that's an important factor, but we can gladly, if there's one or two extra views for the, from the visual study we did that you'd like to see, we'd gladly provide those.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it would probably something, you know, something, you know, resembling, you know, something close by. I know that SHPO, some of those places that they had, they had asked for to be looked at were further away. I know there was a bunch of items down, you know, down the hill from there, actually the old school, which is now the post office and fire district office. And a Stony Kill farm was another one. And I can't remember, it was, oh, the. The house there on South River Road. Can't remember those, I think those were the three sites they had mentioned.
Right, and the good, the good news with that was, and I'm having trouble pulling, remembering exactly when we submitted the visual, but we can go back over that when we make a next submission. The good news is that when we did the extra shots from, from Stony Kill, they were not visible. Similarly, down by the post office, it wasn't visible at all, it wasn't even, I mean, that's, that's the good news story here. I understand that some other aspects are more visible. But we'll go back over our study.
Yeah, if we could get some, get some kind of. Idea of, you know, something that's going to be closer by, because when we go to public hearing, I mean, that's going to be the question. The neighbors around there are going to ask, you know, what's, you know, what's this going to look like? We'd like to be able to, you know, to show them, so that they have a general idea of, you know, what's going to be there. I mean, obviously they've all seen the balloon, we did the balloon test.
Right.
Just something to see how that would, you know, in releva, in relevance to, you know, what's behind it. So I mean, you have.
Yeah, so.
Kind of like, you know, into, into an existing photo of the area.
Yeah, we'll be, yes, and what would be great, and maybe I can do this offline with David's office if no one objects, is just to go back over the visual resource evaluation report we submitted on December twenty-third. And just see if there's a view different than the views that we've done, that he would recommend that we, we provide a simulation. For and, and, and work with and provide some just sort of material to help others understand the difference and why we're recommending against a monopine here. Just we think that. And we'll, we'll, we'll work on putting something together for that.
Okay.
Okay.
David, this is Lisa, do we have a, I'm sorry, Neil, do we have a copy of what you sent to SHPO? Not only, I know we have their response, but do we have a copy of the materials you provided to them?
You do, it's all in the Dropbox that we have provided, that I referenced again, I referenced in my. Uh, you do, it's all in the Dropbox that we have provided, that I referenced again, I referenced in my Dec-ember twenty-third letter. We've been updating both our offices' Dropbox that we provided a link to as well as the, um, consultants have been putting, posting their, um, correspondence in those drop boxes.
Great.
So there's one is an FTP at Cuddy Fader and the other one is a Dropbox.
Great, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Our item three on page three is, is a reminder that a variance from the zoning board of appeals is needed with respect to the proposed tower being within seven hundred and fifty feet of existing residences. And Neil, you probably heard us talk about this during the work session, but the procedure would be, since the planning board's the lead agency, if and when it gets to a point where it believes that it can issue a negative declaration, it would do that. And then you would get, you would, you know, attempt to obtain your variance from the ZBA, assuming you get that, um, you would come back to the planning board for site plan approval.
Perfect, thank you. That, that's what we had, we had anticipated based on our prior practice with you all. Thank you.
Item four is regarding wetlands, and I believe you're still with the Army Corps of Engineers regarding that?
We, yeah, again, that's, that's been posted. We are in a good place with the Army Corps, um, and, um, this, based upon what, um, again, based upon it sounds like there aren't major disagreements on the stormwater. Our limit of disturbances is set and we'll be able to stay under the, uh, nationwide permit and be able to get it, get that from the Army Corps.
Okay. Items five, six, and seven are very minor comments with regard to fencing, lighting, and the reclamation plan, very minor comments. Then our, our other comments are regarding Seeker, and I think you're still with the DEC regarding the Indiana Bats and the, uh, archaeological inventory? Neil?
Um, the archaeological, I believe that the SHPO sign-off letter covered both.
Okay.
Um, and on, I'm sorry, I apologize. Will you repeat the first factor again?
Indiana Bats.
Indiana Bats, I, I believe that we're still in consultation with, not with DEC, with Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, so we're waiting on those things, or that thing?
Well, they'll be
Go on.
They would be issuing a, a, their own determination separate and apart from, because they're not bound by Seeker.
Okay. And then regarding the, um, the comments from the Stony Kill Foundation, I know, Neil, you mentioned that you did a resubmission to SHPO, but it, it would be good if you could address those, uh, some, somewhere where we could put that in our file as well.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
Yep. Has anyone had any problems accessing the FTP on our website with all those documents or, or, or not?
They should really be, some of the pertinent ones, Neil, I think should be submitted to the planning board.
Okay.
In their file instead of being on your FTP site or in the Dropbox.
Okay, we can put, pull that together.
Thank you.
I had one thing quick, uh, Neil, um, one of the, uh, one of the comments in the, in the DEC's, um, Seeker response was that, uh, it looks like with the Army Corps permit, you'll need the, uh, water, uh, water quality, uh, certification. So you need to make sure that you follow up with the DEC on that.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Any board members? No, okay. Um, just checking my notes here, I think we had touched everything we discussed earlier. Okay. All right, so, yeah, so I guess there's, uh, some, you know, some additional information we're still looking for. Uh, Neil, I guess if, you know, um, your can, you know, your consultants can get all that information, you know, put together, I don't know what kind of a timely fashion we have for that, uh, to get that done. But just so we have, you know, update what's been, update to submittal. I guess we'll, uh, so we have, I guess the one, the one last, I guess the one item here, I guess we still need to discuss, because I know there's, um, uh, well, I guess I spoke to Lisa earlier and, uh, this regards the, uh, the shot clock. Um, I guess that there's, you were, you've been agreed, I guess, to extend out another forty-five days beyond, um, I guess beyond your original submittal. That, that's correct.
Right, the shot clock is scheduled to run May eighteenth, conservatively running from the December submission when we gave you the visual report, which made for a complete application. And, um, so we are willing to, um, give you an extension. Unlike state courts, federal courts are still operating right now, but we are more than willing to give you an extension. Um, it's, we feel like we're making progress and, um, you know, we, we, we think forty-five days is, is with the understanding that, um, I understand that, that it won't be complete within those forty-five days and more than likely we will give you another extension, but, uh, we just thought that that would be a good way to keep everyone collaborating and moving quickly.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that to make sure. I appreciate that. I guess these are, I mean, it's tough times right now, I mean, to, you know, schedule meetings and kind of get things going. It's kind of, it's been very awkward lately. Um, all right, so I
No, just, Chairman, just to be absolutely clear, we, we, we understand, we are sensitive to all that and, and we are in agreement that we're giving, it's not one and done. Uh, you know, if we're moving forward and as we all have to navigate this, we would give more as needed and warranted.
Okay, all right, so we'll, I mean, at this point, I mean, I mean, are we, the consultants, do we feel that we're, we're ready for a public hearing regarding this project? I'd like to hear from the, you know, from, uh, David, Peter, Lisa. Do we feel that we're in, in a good spot now to present this to the public to start getting feedback?
David, you're muted, and I can speak for myself. I think we're ready to open a public hearing and start getting the public comments. I mean, we've received some already and we'll make the ones that we've received so far part of the record for the public hearing, but I think we should formally open a public hearing and start allowing the public to speak directly. And also let the public know that they can provide comments by email, um, as well as at the next Zoom meeting or if they prefer even letters, so.
Yes.
I would agree with Lisa, and I think that as long as we have, um, good representations of the two different visual alternates for the, for the tower, so that the public can look at those and weigh in on which they prefer, I think we're ready to go to start the, uh, public hearing.
Okay.
I agree.
You agree, Pete?
Yeah.
All right, so, okay, so with that being said, um, I guess would, um, Mr. Alexander, would you be ready for a public hearing for, uh, for May the eighteenth?
That would be wonderful. We can, um, I, I actually, the question actually comes back to, to Pete. Is there anything we need to do for notice, um, that is, you know, um, two, you know, it's two weeks, two weeks away from today, so is there anything we need to do with you?
We are in the process of drafting the public hearing notice, that legal notice, and I already have the list pulled from GIS and will be, before we send the, um, public hearing notice out officially, we'll run it by you just to see if you have any input.
Excellent, thank you. And, and because we do a lot of telecommunications work, we have to order, um, as far as our firm's operations for essential services, so I have no question we can get this out.
I think we have enough time.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, um, so I guess basically at this point it's to, we need to set the public hearing for May the eighteenth, so we need a motion, um,
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Paul, did you second it?
Yes.
Okay, so motion made, seconded, um, roll call vote, please.
Soprino?
Aye.
Mr. Paraticos?
Aye.
Mr. Marinaccio?
Aye.
Mr. Flower?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli?
Aye.
And again, uh, anybody from the public who is, uh, you know, watching tonight, um, please, um, if you can, uh, submit to, um, to the town to be, uh, her, I believe your email address is on the website.
Yes, it is, and also just to let you know, there are folks on the call now that have questions, but we did let them know that this is not a public hearing and we give them the process as to, you know, how to get to us.
Okay, so you did send that out to them?
Yes, there, there are, you know, people that are wanting to talk, but we are not allowing them.
Right, correct, so
We'll include, um, Pete's, um, email address in the public hearing notice too, so that anyone who sees it, and it will be posted on the doors of Town Hall and it will be posted on the website so that everyone will know how to get in touch with the town. And for the public hearing, you'll be able to participate, uh, either by computer or you just by telephone. The public will be able to speak during that time, so.
Okay, so at that time, uh, so on May the, um, uh, May the eighteenth then, so that will open the public hearing for this project and then we will start, um, taking public comment and we will get everybody's answers addressed. Uh, so if there's nothing else for this evening, um, Mr. Alexander, for good, uh, I guess we'll see you on the, on the eighteenth.
Yes, thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening and, and be safe and healthy.
Good, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so with that item now, uh, we, we have one item left on the agenda this evening. We have an extension for the Cohen subdivision. They're seeking their, um, eighth one-hundred-and-eighty-day extension on a subdivision application, uh, primary and final subdivision approval for a three-lot subdivision. Need a motion to go ahead and extend the, this appro, uh, this approval for another hundred-and-eighty days.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Ralph made the motion.
Second.
Marco Smith, second, okay, um, Pete, will you roll? Call vote, please.
I'm muting myself. Mr. Frino?
Aye.
Mr. Paraticos?
Aye.
Mr. Marinaccio?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli?
Aye.
Mr. Flower?
Aye. Okay, um, so with that being the end of the agenda for this evening, um, I guess we just need a, uh, motion to adjourn.
And I will make that motion.
And I will second.
Okay, so motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Good job, everybody, nice.